Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Allenbas, Ingles.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Folkins.
Here.
And at this time, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on September 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we have a public hearing. Owen, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. So this public hearing is in regards to an easement for Consumers Energy, and this is for their substation that's out in the old well field in the industrial park by our water headquarters building on 8th Street, kind of in that neighborhood there. We've had a lease from consumers on this property since I could find them back to the 60s, and they had requested it go to an easement at this point. The lease was for about $700 a year, and the consideration that they agreed to for the easement was $20,000. So that's a number of decades worth of the $700 a year. So it's kind of a clean, clean break from the lease, moving towards an easement, and we have no concerns about it.
Okay. At this point, we'll go ahead and open the floor for any public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to any discussion or questions that the council might have. No? Okay. So would someone entertain a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to approve granting of an easement to Consumers Energy Company for an electrical substation.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And we do have one communication this evening, Sandy.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the placement of one sign at the two locations listed from October 12th to the 15th, 2022, for the Zion Lutheran Church Craft Show.
And this is the same as in every year? Can I make a motion to approve the placement of one sign at the two locations, one sign each, at the two locations listed from October 12th through 15th, 2022, for the Zion Lutheran Church Craft Show?
Support.
Which everybody should go to.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And then we have several appointments this evening, or reappointments, I should say.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jerry Adams to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 7th, 2025.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Jerry Adams to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 7th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Joseph Bowman to the City of Cadillac Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 7th, 2025.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the reappointment of Joseph Bowman to the City of Cadillac slash Clam Lake Joint Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October 7th, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Leo Paveglio to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on October 21st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Leo Paveglio to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on October 21st, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Chris Crowley to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2026.
I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Chris Crowley to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 5th, 2026.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to the city manager's report. And we're going to talk about pickleball courts tonight.
Yes, we are, and it's kind of an exciting conversation. So community development staff, particularly in Public Works also, has been working with Cliff and Steve Shogren regarding a generous contribution of $100,000 for the construction of pickleball courts. And so in discussions with Mr. Shogren and the family, a site was identified. He had a particular affinity after walking the Keith McKellup walkway for years to have it down there somewhere. And so a site was identified adjacent to the east parking lot of the Cadillac Community Center in a grassy area, open area right now. And our engineer took a look at it and determined that it would work to fit two courts in there. We do have two pickleball courts currently up at Diggins Hill, but regularly get requests. They, it's kind of a Band-Aid sort of temporary ones that are removed so that they can play tennis there. But we've been regularly asked about permanent dedicated pickleball courts. And so when this, when this donation was, was made available, it certainly was, was good news for sure. So the site, again, east of the, or just east of the east parking lot of the Cadillac Community Center, engineer prepared some estimates, which came out at about $129,000. Meeting also held with, with Doreen, who I see is here this evening, from the community foundation, and confirmed that there, there may be the availability of some portion of the matching funds of the $129,000. That leaves $29,000 to match. And certainly then, whatever is left over, we would, we would seek outside funding, but would want to commit to having city dollars available for that as well. It's such a small portion of a, of a nice project. So this would be several steps that would need to happen for this project to actually be built. Tonight, what we want to know, and the family wants to know, is to determine that we have the support to put the pickleball courts at that location. There is a drawing that was in the packet that shows where those would be located. Once we receive that approval to put them there, then we would need to bid the project out and then also appropriate a budget for it, which again, primarily would be from donated funds. So happy to answer any questions.
Doreen, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, we're just happy to handle a pass-through fund and...
Do you want to come up so the people at home can hear you?
Um, yes, I met with Cliff and Steve and John Wallace, and we're happy to help wherever we can. I think there's some funds that we can pull into this project, and Cliff is really excited about it. He wanted four courts, but he's going to settle for two. So I think it's a really nice project for Cadillac and where it's located.
Okay, thank you. I've got one question about the location. I know that in the spring, when I walk the lakefront path, there's a real swampy area as the ice is melting. Is this in a higher elevation where it will not be swampy?
Yeah, so I think when I've seen a lot of that water, it's a little more east of this location. I think certainly...
By the monuments.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And so we would, we're certainly aware of the drainage issues there, and that's why Ken from Public Works has been involved and will make sure that the, the courts are placed at a, at a height that would, would certainly encourage drainage and not, and not puddling of water. So, yep, good question.
Water pickleball.
Water, water pickleball.
Pickleball, pole pickle, pickleball.
Floating, floating pickleball courts, yes.
I also love that it's right by the senior center.
Yeah.
That's just outstanding. There, people have been asking for as long as I've been here for pickleball courts.
Yep. And people have appreciated what we've done up at Diggins Hill. Those courts are in need of some repairs, but this is just, I think, a great second option for, for people that want to do that.
Well, there's so many...
Can't beat the location.
So many people that participate in it now, and it's just a growing sport. So it's a wonderful gift.
Yeah, I agree.
That will really enhance the lakefront.
Yep.
Nice. Thank you, too.
Okay.
What do we need?
We need to have...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the proposed location for the pickleball courts along the east side of the community center adjacent to the Keith McKellup Walkway, as depicted in the conceptual rendering.
You both went.
I'll support.
Councilmember Allenbas, Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Great. So we'll be back to you on that one with a bid and then a budget.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully before too long.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is the Trailhead Cadillac Commons update.
Yeah, so it's looking really, really great down there, and I don't want to steal Mark's thunder, so I'm going to invite Mark Lagerway to speak to you tonight, and I think possibly even a souvenir.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I'm really here just to model my good, my good looks, but this is a shirt for the White Pine Ride, and we thought that this is a time to celebrate. You know, it's been a long time coming, and it looks great. And I just want to thank you and Rotary Club. And when I say the Rotary Club, that's a lot of people. That's not just Rotarians. There's all these people on the back of my shirt that are supporting the White Pine Ride, and there's so many people. We had an auction that Carla chaired back in 2016 to raise funds for the pavilion, and we have our foundation that gives a lot of money. I add it up, it's more than a half million dollars over the last 20 years for the pavilion and everything that's happened down here. We had another auction five years ago to raise funds for the Trailhead, as you know, and I got to chair that one, and I'm really happy to be back here five years later to say that money went to a good cause. So thank you for persevering, and it's, it's, this trail is an amazing resource for our, our city. It's going to get paved all the way from Grand Rapids next year. There's doing six miles right now from Cedar Springs to Roger City, I think it is, and then the final 23 miles will be paved next year, thanks to ARPA funding, which Scott Slavin has in hand to do. So the trail will be paved, and that is an amazing resource all up and down that is really going to put Cadillac in a, in a good place, and having that Trailhead is a wonderful thing. So I just think it's time to celebrate. So I brought you all a shirt, and I have medium, large, extra-large, and extra-extra-large. So you can take your pick of a shirt, and again, it's a great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mark, do you want to tell them a little bit about the event next week?
Yes, so we're having the ribbon cutting will be on Friday at 7:00 PM. And I think John put out a invitation to that. I think you might have seen it. It's, looks like that, and it's going to be at 7:00 PM down at the, at the Trailhead. We also will have our White Pine Ride banner strung across there. It will work nicely. And then from 7:00 to 9:00, we actually have our registration pickup for the White Pine Ride. And then the White Pine Ride is on Saturday, October 1st. And, and that's a fundraiser also for the trail. And this is our fourth annual, and it will be, we have, we have raised, we've spent $20,000 this past year putting in a picnic shelter at East 44 Road. So that's all finished now. You might have noticed that it was kind of short. The seats were set up for little kids because the contractor got it a little wrong. So they came back last week and put a fix and raised it up, so now it's actually adult size, height. And so it's a really nice feature on the trail. There are six of those up and down the trail. Four of them are down in the south end. Then there's one in Tustin, as you know, and then there's one here. They're all identical, and they're made in Oregon, and they get, had to get shipped here. So it was a big process getting it all done, but it's fine, it's finished. So that's what we raised funds for from the White Pine Ride, and we're raising more this year. We have like $10,000 worth of sponsorships for the ride this year, so we're, we're really happy, and we're hoping to have about 100 riders or so. So that's what's, that's what's happening.
How are you doing for volunteers for that day?
We're looking pretty good, actually. Yep, yep, we, we did a presentation last week at Rotary and, and got a few more signups. And we have a good, strong committee of people that are helping with the ride, so.
Okay.
It's really, as, as far as fundraisers go, it's not a, not a hard one because it's not a race. You don't have to hire timers. People come and go as they like. They can start when they want. If it rains, they can ride on Sunday or Friday, doesn't matter, you know? So it's just a celebration. It's really a family-oriented ride. It's kind of funny when you look at the statistics, the average age is probably 50-plus. And, but there are people from all over Michigan that come for this. It's not just from Cadillac. Like, I think maybe less than half the riders right now are from Cadillac. They're all from other places, so.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other, any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great project.
So would you like to pick out your shirts?
Sure.
All right, so I have a large, a medium.
I went by there today, and they were putting the...
I got a large. I'll be at the event with sound.
I'm going to get a medium for bucks.
Mediums are not bad size.
Are they men's sizes?
Sometimes they're too tight for me, but this is good.
I'll take a medium.
If you've got an XL, I'll do an XL. Schmedium?
Large.
Yeah, the schmedium.
Schmedium.
That's an extra-large. Couple extra ones here, so see how that looks.
Thank you, perfect.
Oh, that'd be good.
You want a medium?
Like wearing these athletic shirts of things I don't participate in. Everybody thinks I'm a biker and a... Really, I just gave money to the event.
There's a medium?
You have a zero sticker.
Thank you.
Our T-shirts are... I would like a large, please. In case we have to wear a turtleneck underneath them, too.
There you go. Yeah, that's why.
Because I'm going to work. Yeah, that's...
I'll give it to Astron. So I could layer.
I don't, yeah, I don't like clingy, clingy stuff.
I like the colors.
I do, too.
It's great color. ...lake, and so much so that in the past, we've had seasons where we've treated like nine acres. And now they're telling us that we need to treat upwards of approximately 150 acres potentially. So we did some analysis of, of the study and the types of chemicals that would be used and backed off on some of the costs. And, you know, this is not, this is not something where we've been negligent over the last few years to make this happen. This is just simply a result of, of nature and how these things grow and how they come about. We have followed the recommendation each year of the consultant and the treatment process. And so I want that to be very clear, and this is just simply kind of an unfortunate situation where these, these number of acres have been identified as, as being a problem. So the situation that we're in, we typically, over the last few years, and we have data, if you have questions on this, but based on the, the few years before, we had budgeted about $16,000 in treatment costs, and those were all coming from a transfer from the general fund in addition to the cost that we pay the, the consultant to monitor the lake and give us this kind of guidance. We're expecting that if, if we're able to treat all of these acres in the red area on the, the picture in the packet, it could, the cost could be as high as $90,000. And so we need to appropriate about $75,000 more in costs. Now, there's a couple of things that could happen in the, in the upcoming weeks and, and month, and if I, if I misstate anything, Mike or Todd, feel free to, to jump in. But we're going to go, again, as soon as we get some authorization, get the, the spraying contractor out there. If the weeds are such where the treatment would be highly effective this fall, we'll put it all down. There's a, there's a particular point with the, the season and where the weeds are in terms of kind of when they start to die off, that they may tell us that, that it wouldn't be as effective, and so we would hold off. And then in the spring, it could be worse, it could be better, but we are anticipating a higher level of cost. So what we want to do in, in trying to be prudent with how we do this is to have the funds appropriated and ready to do the maximum amount of treatment that they've said we may be up against, and that's up to $90,000. We won't use any more than required, and we won't transfer from the general fund any more than what's required based on what they see when they go out there to actually do the, do the spray at the timing that they do it. So the recommended action, you know, obviously, this is a huge asset in the community. We've followed the recommendations each year. We want to do that again. And so we are recommending a, a transfer from the general fund using reserve dollars on hand to treat the lake in additional 75, up to $75,000. And once these final costs are known, again, we'll only transfer and use the, the total amount necessary to follow the treatment guidelines that we get when they actually go out and do the, kind of the final survey and the treatment process. And then I would anticipate also kind of a report back to, to show and to, to inform council and the public with, with what went down. So that's kind of the gist of it. If there are some more detailed questions, we may need to call on, on Mike, who represents the, the consultant, and then Todd, who's our internal point person on, on lake management.
I, I do have a question. Is this something, I know that it's something we do on an annual basis, and as far as treating it, have we treated more than once a year in the past, or would we?
Mike, if you can just introduce yourself, and a lot of us know you, but...
Yeah, Mike Solomon, I'm senior hydrologist with Restorative Lake Sciences and also have some responsibilities in, in Wexford County. Jennifer couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to fill in. A few things, yeah, we, we oftentimes treat more than once a year. Lake Cadillac has, you know, been a real success story, and what we attribute this to is a seed bank resurgence. You know, 10 years ago, or whenever this process was started, there was a lot of milfoil. And the seeds can stay viable for, you know, basically decades. And we see this on other lakes. We just had one on Bear Lake in Manastee that we treated last year. They had been moving along similar to what Mr. Stalker described, five to 10 acres a year, and then they get 50. And yours was a little bit more than that. I assume everybody's got this in color in their, in their package. Most of it is on the west end of the lake. And I don't know how the budget process works, but we can have three boats on the lake tomorrow. And the only adjustment that needs to be made, and I've already provided for this, is the Eagle permit needs to be increased from the $800, which covers, I think, up to 60 acres, to greater than 100 acres is $1,600. So that'll be a call first thing tomorrow morning. What we will do is treat everything that is shown. Jennifer asked, and we consulted on this, for an additional leeway of $5,000. Two chemicals were recommended, REN3, which we've been using on large treatments like this on many other lakes, and it's been really successful. And then Prisilicor Diquat, which is, I believe, what we used last year, but it's used on those smaller spots. It's just more, more effective where REN3, you know, you just kind of spill it over the whole, the whole area, and it works pretty good. The other thing I, I want to mention is that area that's west of 115, whatever you want to call the area between Dollar General and Berkey's, and that is topped out, we have not had a boat on it, but from the shore, it sure looks like milfoil. And to me, that's a nursery area that I want to explore with staff to see if we can get in there, survey it, and, and treat it. As far as any additional areas while we're treating tomorrow, if we notice highly dense areas, then we'll use that additional funding to, to treat those. But, you know, this survey is over a month ago, so there, there could be some expansion. We look at September as the new August for treating milfoil. Milfoil can grow right through the winter. We can open up the ice and still see green milfoil growing. We'll be treating at least through the end of the month on different lakes. So there, there's nothing about this that is too late in the season or, or anything along those lines. I think that's it, if there's any...
No?
Would, would the funding be immediately available, or do we need to push the train?
Yeah, so we can, we can talk about that after the meeting. Yep, we can move.
Okay, all right. Yep, thank you.
We're preparing to be very efficient. This is what we're doing, so.
And we appreciate the support, so. I would have brought T-shirts if I had known.
You didn't know.
The milfoil busters. Milfoil buster.
Uncomfortable.
Yeah, that's a lot of...
Okay, if there's no discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, you did a great job, Mike. Thank you. I've been very happy with Restorative Lake Services and what you guys have been doing, so. And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for budget amendment to transfer additional funds to the Lake Treatment Fund and appropriate, appropriate additional funds to cover potential treatment costs. Are we going to stick with that up to $90,000?
Did that, that 90, did that include the $5,000 accommodation?
Yeah, actually, the 90,000 was treatment with Prisilicor Diquat for everything, and, and we, you know, wanted to give a second alternative, and we're, we're comfortable with...
So 90 should be everything that we need.
Yep.
What if you find milfoil on the other side of 115? Would that be another...
Right now, that's not even within the capability of being treated, treated without consulting with Eagle.
Okay.
So...
But I believe it's outside of...
That's outside of the city, but if you look, it's connected to the lake.
I think we've asked the city...
Mike, if you could speak in to them, I'm sorry, just in case there are folks listening at home, so they can hear.
We'd ask the city to, to look into that because as I understand it, Berkey's through half of the pines is within city limits. I guess the pines is split between Cherry Grove and the city. So we'd like that determination. If it's in Clam Lake, then we could go to them and see what they, what they want to do.
Have you ever treated on that side of the highway?
No. The, that has never been treated by anybody, so.
I'm going to continue with my motion to transfer additional funds to Lake Treatment Fund and appropriate additional funds to cover potential treatment costs of up to $90,000.
Support. Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbas, Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Should've jumped up here, but Mark was up here. Can you let everyone know who you are?
Yes, my address. I got to remember it. I'm Doreen Lance from Cadillac Erie Community Foundation, and I just wanted to add on that we have some, like, unrestricted funds, and they're usually memorial funds, that the money has been sitting there for years and years, and we never really had a really good project that we wanted to put them to. Well, we're putting them to the clock tower. So whenever I have some extra money like that, I talk to John Wallace. He's great to work with, and it's like, you know, let's come up with something I, you know, really important where we can acknowledge these people. So I'm really excited about that. The other thing is, is Ken Payne's wonderful to work with. We have three new benches around town. I have not seen them planted yet, but they're supposed to be there. And they have Rotary across them, and that was from a matching grant from District Rotary that I applied for, and then the foundation paid for the concrete to put them in. So when you're out and about, I think one is by the Flags out on the Causeway. That was my pet project, the Flags, so I really wanted one out there. That was my pet project, the Flags, so I really wanted one out there. And then the other two, I think, are around town, maybe by the...
By the pavilion.
Pavilion.
By the library. This, this labs are in, and I think they were working on...
Oh, great. Well, I'll go out tomorrow and take pictures, but...
Thank you for writing that grant.
Yeah, and I'm writing another one right now to help with some, another project. So the district is very generous about if we, you know, Rotary is sustained and stuff like that, we can apply for these grants every year. And so I've applied for them for like five years straight, so... But thanks for, you know, what the city does, is great to work with.
Wonderful, thank you, Doreen. Okay, good at the order. Does anyone have anything?
I do. Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council is going to be meeting our, with our first new crew this Wednesday at 7:00 AM. With kids that we have on council, they're all in sports. They all have jobs because they are people who make a difference in the world. And if you are somebody that has after-school things